It's crazy that we're like here together. She's not in daycare, you know, like I'm not in high school anymore. She's not in high school anymore. A lot of people, they're like, oh, is that your cousin? Is that your friend? I'm like, this is my mother. People are kind of judgmental, even when I like tell them, I'm like, she's done all these things and you know, people are still just kind of like, oh, she had you at 16?
Welcome everyone to the North Star High School Graduation.
When I found out I was pregnant with Alexandra, I was 15. I was very, very scared. I told Chris and he was scared. You know, he was 16. He's like, what are you gonna do? And I was like, I don't know. When we came to Lincoln, I found out there was a daycare here. I remember going through this hallway after, in the morning, after I dropped you off. This is where you were. My experience at that daycare was great. They used to have a changing table here. They had your guys' cots. I think it was like right here. There was a lady that would come and rock them. Like she donated her time and she would come and rock the kids. It is familiar, I would say, in the playground is, yeah, familiar. Because of that, I had the opportunity to continue and graduate.
You have proven you can learn and adapt. During your time in the Lincoln Public Schools...
This is a very big moment. I, I feel like it truly is because it's like the foundation, the start of the rest of your life.
We must also recognize that success is never attained alone.
Everybody had been waiting for this moment, like, oh my gosh, she's gonna graduate, she's oldest, oh my god. It was exciting. It was emotional for me, for my mom, for my sister, for my husband. I looked at the name card and I was so happy because I asked my counselor if he would be able to add my mom's last name to it. I was so happy that they're gonna read Alexandra Marie Rogers Baron. Dear Mom, I'm just grateful to have a mother who would put everything on hold for their child.
Alexandra Marie Rogers Baron.
You still love me and care for me even when I'm difficult. There were days I'd just sit down and cry and I remember you telling me each time that you believed in me. You pushed me to become a better and stronger person. You'd do anything for us. All the things I've done is thanks to you and Dad. Know that I'm not just grateful for you. I'm proud of you and everything you have done. I couldn't imagine doing all that you do for us and all that you did for me when you were 16. Never forget how much you mean to me and how much I love you. For me.
She did it. Next up, UNL.
Meeting of the Board of Education, regular meeting for Tuesday, August 12th is called to order. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Goodwin.
Present.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Present.
Mrs. Krevulovic.
Here.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Here.
Dr. Rowner.
Here.
Mr. Shavastov.
Present.
The Open Meetings Act is posted at the main entrance for the room for those who'd like to read it. We have minutes from the July 22nd board meeting and a work session for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as published. Next, we have item 6.1. Annie.
Thank you. Could Mr. Josh Jones please meet me at the podium? This is very exciting. I've gotten to know Mr. Jones by being on the board of the TCA for now, on my second year, two years, and before that, being an almost TCA parent, almost. And the point of that is that Mr. Jones here was so helpful at that point in time when I was calling you crying on the phone going, we don't know what to do next. And he was so helpful and so you so deserve this award from my perspective and I am sure you gave so many other parents the same kind of attention that you helped us with. My child is great, thank you, but did not go that direction, but not for lack of trying. So, I would like to offer this as a motion. Whereas Josh Jones serves as Director of the Career Academy and was recently named Administrator of the Year by the Nebraska Educators Rising Chapter, and whereas Josh Jones consistently supports students by providing them with the freedom to brainstorm ideas and helping bring them to fruition, and whereas Josh Jones ignites a passion for learning and provides students and staff with resources to extend their understanding, and whereas Josh Jones helps Lincoln Public Schools fulfill its mission of preparing students for successful careers, lifelong learning, and civic engagement, and whereas Josh Jones is valued, respected, and admired among his colleagues, not only at Lincoln Public Schools, but also across the state of Nebraska, now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Josh Jones for being honored by the Nebraska Educators Rising Chapter with the Administrator of the Year Award. Signed, Dr. Bob Rowner, President of the School Boards, and Dr. John Skretta, Interim Superintendent. Congratulations.
Well, thank you to Ms. Mumgaard and to the board for this recognition. My family didn't come because it's their first day tomorrow. I did talk to Dr. Skretta. He wanted to issue a snow day. I could probably get them up here in time to the board meeting so that they could get one additional night's sleep. Thank you so much for the recognition. This is a true honor. It's an honor to serve the community of the Career Academy, which is unique because it's the, really the one place in Lincoln where we get to bring the entire community together. And this year, as we celebrate record enrollment, record partnership, a great partner in Southeast Community College and Lincoln Public Schools, again, it's not a, it's not a task I take lightly. It's a true blessing to serve that community alongside all of our incredible staff, our office staff, the great people in Lincoln Public Schools. It's amazing to be honored tonight next to Sue Casada, who I have tremendous respect for, as I do all of my other principal colleagues. So, again, thank you for this recognition. Thank you for allowing the Career Academy to exist because it gives students hope, it gives families hope, and it gives our, it gives our community a future. And so, again, thank you to the board. Appreciate it.
Do I? Do I have a second? Piush?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I've got to add something.
Yeah.
I've also had some chance now to actually sit down and have coffee with Mr. Jones. We are, he has barely started, people. We have, there are so many options and just such great thinking and buck, and turning, tearing down some walls, thinking that it's just very exciting to know what's in the future and the leadership that we have helping us move, not just here, but definitely here at TCA, helping us to move along in some fascinating directions, so.
Piush?
I've also had the opportunity to spend a bunch of time with Josh and I so appreciate the way you interact with the students, the way you motivate them and you help them become leaders and bring them to the board meetings and others. So, so I really appreciate all of that, that you do, continue doing it, because it's so invaluable for, for those students that are going to the Career Academy. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevulovic.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have item 6.2. Murrah.
Hi there, I'd like to call Mrs. Sue Casada to the podium, please.
I'd like to make a motion. Whereas Sue Casada serves as Principal of Standing Bear High School and was recently named Region One High School Principal of the Year by the Nebraska State Association of Secondary School Principals, and whereas Sue Casada works collaboratively with staff, students, and families to build strong connections and relationships within the school community to support individual and collective growth journeys. Whereas Sue Casada is a transformative leader who engages in artfully challenging the status quo to effectively connect diverse ideas for the greater good of the educational environment. And whereas Sue Casada has mentored countless principals and administrators from across Lincoln Public Schools through patience and a willingness to engage in active listening, and whereas Sue Casada is valued, respected, and admired among her colleagues, not only at Lincoln Public Schools, but also across the state of Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Sue Casada for being honored by the Nebraska State Association of Secondary School Principals with the Region One High School Principal of the Year Award. Signed, Bob Rayner, President of Lincoln Public Schools, Board of Education, and Dr. John Skretta, Interim Superintendent of Schools. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening. At Standing Bear, we talk about the power of place. Three years ago, while we were in the planning stages for Standing Bear, this phrase landed with me. As I learned and I traveled and I talked with, talked with PONCA leaders to understand more about Chief Standing Bear's story, not only as a chief, but as a civil rights leader, as a father, as a brother, and as just a community member, the notion of place landed and stuck, and stuck. Whether it be in Niobrara or the PONCA Trail of Tears, bringing, or bringing his son back, Bear Shield back as he, after he passed, or the courtroom, or traveling the country afterwards, anyone who had the opportunity to listen to Chief Standing Bear understood the power of place was central to his life. As we think about creating a culture of high school, this phrase continues to resonate as high schools are not static entities. Instead, they shape the lives of people who are there and in turn are shaped by the lives of people who inhabit them. How place, place shapes us and in turn influences us as individuals is a powerful notion. I have been lucky enough to call Lincoln Public Schools home for almost 30 years. I know I don't look it, but it is there. As a teacher, administrator, learner, student, and as a parent, this place has become my home. This place has helped for me as a human and through the interactions and roles that I've had, I am a better person because of it. It is because of those interactions and the opportunities that this district has awarded me that I've had the opportunity to, to be recognized for this award. Lincoln Public Schools, although it's not just one place, instead is a large swath of the city of Lincoln, continues to play a role in the development of many. Because of the leadership of the Board of Education, the executive team, the directors, principals are able to create places in which our communities thrive. And you just heard Josh Jones talk about that community. I am thankful that I've had the chance to help make a culture, or help create a culture in one of those settings within LPS, and I'm grateful to have been entrusted to do that. And honestly, that is my greatest honor. I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Skretta, the members of the executive team, Ms. Jess Fries, Director of Secondary Education, for their leadership and their willingness to trust the principals to make decisions on behalf of our communities. I want to mention my family, my husband Larry, my son Tate, and my, one of my best friends, Mary Ryman, who willingly gave me space to do what I love, which is to be a high school principal. Today was our first grade with ninth, first day with ninth graders. We welcomed the class of 2029 and tomorrow we get to welcome their peers. It was a great day at Standing Bear to witness the true power of place. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I've had the privilege of knowing Sue at a variety of different intersections during my career at LPS and during her season when she was a collaborator with us at DOWN. How fitting this is for you to have spread your time, talent, and treasure across this district. Kudos to you.
All right. Do you want a second while, while, by the way? We need a second.
I'll second. I second that.
Annie?
I also will say that early on in my being on the board and I got the chance, I took the chance to visit East High and visit with Sue. Now, when you join the board, you're coming in as, well, you're always an individual, but you only have your very limited perspective of how school operates because of your own kids and your own experience. And it was going to visit you at the high school, I do not even remember exactly what it was, but our visit made me really understand the power of the principal and the direction it gave and the local control and all of that understanding and how then they so worked together. And I just really appreciated that. I don't know if I ever told you that, but I appreciated it because it really gave me a healthy perspective of how to be, understand better how we work as a whole and how, as you just said it, that's exactly kind of the perspective you must have told me about seven or eight years ago. So, thank you.
Okay. Any things? All right. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Krevulovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, your address, the name of any organizations you are representing, and we will inform you when one minute remains. I have a card from Lori Ashmore.
Hi, my name is Lori Ashmore and I'm here on behalf of the Rainbow Parents of Nebraska. My address is 6749 Old Dominion Road here in Lincoln, Nebraska. The Rainbow Parents of Nebraska were shocked and saddened by the statement made by Governor Pillan at his press conference on June 4th of this year. Even though the bathrooms and the locker rooms are no longer part of 89, the governor called for vigilante enforcement by saying, "Most of the young boys and men in Nebraska know right from wrong and they'll take care of whoever tries to go in the locker room or restroom." This drew laughs from those in the audience at the press conference. If we didn't already feel emboldened enough by our current national administration, then our governor essentially gave permission for the people of the state to take things into their own hands. This is extremely scary, not only for transgender and non-conforming people, but it should also scare cisgender people as well. This gives a license to anyone to enter a bathroom or a locker room anytime they see fit to take care of things. The governor has not tried to walk back his statement, the damage has already been done. Words matter and unfortunately, the leader of our state said the quiet part out loud when called for this type of behavior. Schools across the state will be left to deal with the collateral damage from the statement. We expect that there will be a rise in bullying and people attempting to police bathrooms and locker rooms without any legal authority to do so. We are urging all schools and school districts in Nebraska to prepare for this and to have a strong disciplinary response in place for those individuals who attempt to take matters into their own hands. We again want to reiterate that LB89 has no effect on bathrooms or locker rooms and we expect schools to stand against the damage that Governor Pillen's rhetoric might cause. In regards to LB89, we urge the LPS Board of Education to provide guidance to schools to help lessen the harmful effect of this discriminatory bill. If you watch the hearing or the debates on this bill, you're aware of the chaos this legislation is about to cause. Students will be outed against their will when they have only been known by a current identity. Students or parents will use this law in a retaliatory manner because their team is losing or because they don't like another player. This will harm both trans and cisgender students, either of who could be on the receiving end of these accusations. What will happen when a trans boy is suddenly forced to play on a girls' team and how will the parents of the girls react to having a boy on their daughter's team? We've seen countless examples of how irrational parents come, become when it comes to sports. They will attempt to take matters into their own hands. I felt it's especially important to come to speak today and to highlight the challenges that will be faced in the coming year because of bad governance and foolish words spoken by our state officials. I want to bring awareness to the comments made by the governor so that the schools can prepare for the backlash. I also want to implore you to help guide our schools to make the terrible laws less harmful to our students and protect all Nebraska students from the repercussions of this law. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
No other blue cards? We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I move approval of item 8, the consent agenda.
Okay. Annie?
I'll second it.
Are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements?
There is a conflict. I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on agenda item 8.2A as to all matters identified and reflected by my separate potential conflict of interest statement filed herewith. My vote in favor of consent is a vote in favor of all other consent items except those identified in the statement upon which I have or do hereby abstain.
Okay. Any other comments? Laura, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevulovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have item 9.1 from board committees, and 9.1.1, Policy 2120. Piush?
John, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I can just share a little bit on that, Piush. Thank you. This one's fairly self-explanatory in terms of the policy language attachment. This is expanded language to bring into policy to define employee groups, adds descriptive and defining language for administrators group and technicians group, recognizing that admin and technician groups are similarly situated employees, so this is for purposes of the meet and confer bargaining process, and that's kind of the background on that.
Any discussion? Okay. So, come back to us at our next meeting. Next, we have item 9.2.1, the proposed agreements with Maintenance Employees Association and Transportation Employees Association for the 25-26 school year. Blake Irvin.
Good evening, Board. Lake Simpson, Director of Employee Relations and Chief Negotiator, has worked really, really hard with these last two remaining employee groups, Maintenance and Transportation, and I am pleased to share that we have reached a tentative agreement with both of those. I would ask that we would waive a second reading and get this completed tonight in one reading so that we can move forward as we begin the new school year.
All right. Barb?
I move approval of waiving second reading of 9.2.1, Proposed Agreements with Maintenance Employees Association and Transportation Employees Association for the 25-26 year.
Okay.
I second it.
You have a second? Okay. And then we have, is there any discussion? Barb?
Just want to go and, and thank all of our employees for their dedication to this school district and we can't do school without everybody on the team, including Maintenance and Transportation. And we really appreciate you and thank you for being a part of this community.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevulovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have 9.2.2, Committee Learning Center Agreements.
Liz? We'll probably bring forward, Nola, yes, the expert. We'll bring forth the expert here.
These are our annual contracts with our nine CLC lead agencies, which will be serving 31 schools in our district this year. You will recognize that the dollar amounts are different on each one of the contracts and that is based on the number of schools that each agency serves and the number of students who attend at that school. These contracts cover all of the funding that comes through Lincoln Public Schools, which includes 21st Century Community Learning Centers funding, Safe and Successful Kids Interlocal Title I funds, and any other funds that run through the district. We do have two new schools being added to the CLC umbrella this year and those are Medalline and Roper. Questions?
All right. Barb?
First of all, I just want to comment for a moment on how appreciative I am of our community learning centers. It was 20 years ago that my son was getting ready to start kindergarten and I had just gotten on the board and I'd been busy with all that and I kind of had forgotten about his after-school care because, you know, I'm, work full-time and, and just thank God, CLCs are there and he loved every minute of it, including during the summer. So, thank you for what you do, benefited. He knows how to play chess, he can go and, and paddle in a kayak, there's so many things he learns. So, very good benefit for all our students. I also just want to go and move approval of 9.2.2, Waiving Second Reading for Community Learning Center Agreements with Family Service YMCA of Lincoln, Lincoln Parks and Recreation, Cedars Youth Services, Malone Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, Northeast Family Center, Willard Community Center, and Lincoln Housing Authority. You got a great list of partners.
Yes. We have great partners.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevulovic.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
I abstain.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have item 9.2.3, Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement for SRO and Threat Assessment Officers. Liz?
That's me. Good evening, Board members. This is our annual approval of the interlocal agreement with the city of Lincoln for our school resource officers. We have 14 school resource officers and one dedicated threat assessment officer. This is part of our Safe and Successful Kids Interlocal Agreement that we have with the city. We will continue to have individual school resource officer support at our high schools as well as at each of our middle schools. For the middle school, each individual school resource officer shares two middle schools. There are no substantive changes to our agreement here. It is an agreement that runs from September 1st through August 31st, and so this comes before you each August to ensure that there's a continuation of service. Our SROs have been professional learning with us over the summer and they are having back-to-school week, just like our students are this week. And so, we have a tremendous partnership with the city. I know that we've had glimpses on our school resource officer program and this is just our agreement to continue that. The dollar number on here represents 50% of the salary of the school resource officers is our part of the agreement. I do think it's important to point out for the board and for our community members watching that in November, the SSKI board will meet and that is when there is an annual in-depth program review of the school resource officer program. That is followed by a smaller version of that for the LPS board, but that takes place later in the year. There is, for those unfamiliar with it, there is a significant amount of data collection, analysis, and reporting and deep diving that occurs. That occurs at that time and across those two meetings. This is simply the agreement with the city to continue to have our school resource officer program. We have, we do not need anything waived. We have time before September. This can come back for second reading later in August. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Barb?
Could we at our next meeting have just a brief overview as to what the school resource officers do, to just kind of update the community as to what this service is and some of the highlights of the previous report so that people know that the board and the JPA board also is well-informed as to how this cooperative agreement works?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Annie? Annie?
I won't, well, I will repeat myself where I will yet again say, it's highly unfortunate that we're always asked to make a budget vote before we have information to support the budget vote, except what we do have this year is we do have enough years and enough experience, as Ms. Byer pointed out, that we have some, some good information and some good movement on it. And I also highly value the, our SRO officers in our schools, knowing that we always have room to grow. What I would like to do is, since we just, did just talk about this in student learning... What I would like to do is, since we just did just talk about this in student learning, was a little bit about the language in the contract about when officers are in the buildings. Would you mind kind of pulling that out?
Sure, just a brief overview. So, standard day for a school resource officer is with, I would assume, any other officers on the force, starts with heading to reporting, so they'll have their morning meeting. So, they may not start their day specifically at their school site. The language in there does cover us for the full day. Language in the agreement does say, to the extent possible, which allows for lots of flexibility. What principals experience and communities experience is when we do have things that come up. I can speak firsthand to that of, hey, we maybe had something that surfaced at an activity event the night before, or perhaps there's something that's come up on social media. We are, they're very responsive to coming to the buildings, being excused for morning reporting without us losing that support at the end of the day at dismissal, when we're also sending everybody out en masse. And so, there's language in there that allows for us to have a little flexibility, but their standard day starts with them doing their morning briefing and report, which oftentimes helps them stay connected. Information that's germane to their communities, that they're able to bring back and help inform those at the school site, while still having the flexibility. They work before school starts many times, and they continue to help and provide support after school often many times. And so, the language in there allows us, to the extent possible, and the city, to the extent possible, to make sure that we have the coverage that we need.
Thank you very much. The other question was also about the training that they receive, that our SRO officers are not just coming from being a highly-trained LPD officer to be an SRO, but there's a step in between?
Yes, we have annual SRO training where they actually engage in professional learning right alongside our administrators. We actually have a grant that you, as a board, approved this last spring to help us try to actually scale out capacity to do so, and there is a requirement, actually, they have a minimum requirement of twenty hours. We go over that amount. They're anxious to learn with us. It's some of the most valuable training that we have each summer.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Let's move back, we'll be back with us at our next meeting. Next, we move on to item ten point one from board committees, ten point one point one, newly annexed property of the City of Lincoln. Do I have a motion for approval? Barb?
I move approval of ten point one point one, approval of newly annexed property to the City of Lincoln, and this includes Wyson Moor and Standing Bear, and it's close to the Grandview Si, and I think that's where I'll stop.
All right, do we have a second? Laura?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevlovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, item ten point one point two, Legislative Guidelines. Do I have a motion for approval? Annie?
I move we approve ten point one point two, our legislative guidelines.
Do we have a second? Barb?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to again welcome Brad Jacobson to our team and looking forward to your really critical work for us standing at the legislature, and these guidelines help this board stay on track regarding legislation that can go and impact school districts, not just ours, but those across the state.
All right, any other discussion? Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevlovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Next, we have item ten point one point three, the twenty-two, twenty-six board and superintendent annual goals and priorities. I'll note that there were some suggested edits last time that were made to the priorities, and I think I made comment last time, typically, there's two to three goals. We have five, so we're asking John to be an overachiever as well as his team, so do we have a motion for approval?
I move approval of item ten point one point three, the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six board and superintendent annual goals and priorities.
Okay, Peush?
I second that.
Any discussion? Annie?
Thank you for the wordsmithing. I appreciate that very much when I was reading it this time, because it's also very understandable. I mean, we call these, these are both the goals for the board and the superintendent, and so it should be very clear that, in my perspective, that these goals show what our priorities are for the year to come, and I really appreciate that our priorities are sticking right there with our strategic plan, because I think, I mean, our team works really, really hard. They're already working at so many things, and our priorities are showing this is where we really want, you know, just maybe that pinpoint of a little bit more attention and so forth. So, thank you very much for those of you who worked, reworked it after my many comments, and I appreciate that where we're at, that it seems like it's workable and understandable for all of us for the year to come.
Appreciate that, and I think collaborative effort will lead to our collective success, so much appreciated.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevlovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
That finishes second reading. We have no expedited emergency actions, no items removed from consent agenda, information items, item thirteen point one. Are there any updates from board committees? Okay, any from special appointments? Annie?
I want to talk about that, the TCA, that Career Academy Joint Board did meet this past Tuesday, and there's a couple of really wonderful things besides the fact that they're led by Josh Jones, who is a wonderful thing for us. Enrollment, first of all, TCA is ten years old this year, and we are going to have a celebration on October thirtieth. We'll probably get more information about that. The culinary students will be making orders, so it will be well worth anyone's time, as well as just celebrating that. But kind of a fanfare about that is that the enrollment this fall is, Josh just told me that today it's at eight hundred and thirty, which is the highest level ever, and that they expect some to fall off, but last year at this time, they had eight hundred and thirty in July, and by this time, they started with like fifty less, seven ninety or something like that. But he said, we didn't fall off, we're still at eight thirty, so it's really very exciting. This year also that we are beginning one of the adjusted programs out at us at TCA, which is where we are instituting, it's going to be in early childhood, and it's where there is an LPS special ed teacher as well an SEC instructor. If anyone knows about adjusted programs, it's where our students within our special ed program take the same kind of information, take kind of class, but in an adjusted way. It's either taught, it's taught in a different manner for learning purposes, and this is an adjusted program. The really cool thing about this is early childhood, and we're teaming up with Lincoln Little's to offer internships, which will provide focused career development for sixteen students, so our students will be able to go straight into the workforce if they choose to do so from TCA. So this is just really an amazing pilot program, as well as there, that, how, what we can do with this for so many things. It's very exciting. We also did talk about our insurance, and after the windstorm we had this past weekend, it was a good thing. We talked about our insurance. The structure of TCA is that we are actually an interlocal cooperation. We own the building with Southeast Community College, which is highly unusual, so because of that, it creates some issues with insurance, which means that our insurance did go up, but it's still totally worth it, and it's up about fifteen thousand from last year, and then I think it was tested out over the weekend, but I think TCA is doing fine. So, also, I just wanted to know that we had a lot of students who went to national competitions this past summer, and then they reported that we had students who went, four students who topped, went to Skills USA, with the top, the top finisher was, one of our students was eleventh nationally in our culinary arts. We sent eleven students to Educators Rising in Orlando. TCA sent three students to Las Vegas for the Anna Tomage Table Competition, which is a person, a digital person that you can work on. It's a medical kind of learning, very well stated, but there you go. And we had one TCA student who went to the HOSA competition in Nashville, and not only are they competing, but they're really learning so many leadership skills, being able to compete nationally, so. All in all, TCA has gone from us talking about, oh, we want this number, and we have this number, and creeping, 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 and it's very exciting to be at that tenth year and being, going so strongly, so. We'll meet again sometime in the next couple of months again. That's the end of the report.
All right, from the superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. We started with students today. Woo, awesome. Three grade levels, so every school is underway. Candidly, with dozens of LPS schools having some damage inflicted by two consecutive nights of major thunderstorms and high winds last weekend, the start simply would not have happened without Herculean efforts from our custodial and operations teams. We owe a huge debt of gratitude towards our head building custodians, their teams for doing timely building checks and then identifying critical areas that needed to be addressed in a real short turnaround. So, really appreciate the team effort to remove damaged trees, doing things like fixing rooftop HVAC units, troubleshooting issues when power was restored. Want to mention in particular Scott Lanham, Supervisor of Custodial Services, Anthony Meintz, Facilities Management, and Tim Losky, who's right here with us. The team response was awesome, so great job, guys, much appreciated. I had the opportunity today to start the dawn, start the day pre-dawn thirty over at Park Boulevard with the LPS transportation team, and Phil, it was awesome. It was awesome to see the esprit de corps of our dedicated drivers and the transportation pairs. That team keeps student safety front and center, and they were truly excited to get a new year underway. Today was a great start to the student year. We welcomed kindergarten, sixth, and ninth graders, and it was just inspiring to see staff welcoming students back and see that sense of community. So this was our inaugural year for phasing in the elementary grade levels with K only or kindergarten only, and we were out there in buildings. We got to see firsthand how the pre-planning efforts of principals and building and grade level teams working together went into preparing a wonderfully welcoming and supportive day for our students in those critical transition years of kindergarten, sixth, and ninth. You know, and at the elementary, I think it really reinforced the strategic imperative of supporting onboarding of students with this phased-in approach. We were thinking and hearing from principals and staff of, gosh, this is fantastic and what a great start, and we got to see some of that firsthand. I want to thank Mara Peush Marilyn for accompanying me on different school visits, and to thank principals, in particular Jeff at Adams, Rudy at Zeeman, Emily at Ruth Hill Elementary, because they welcomed and accommodated our visit, and on one of those visits, we had also like a reporter and a photographer from the Journal Star, so you had the whole paparazzi effect going on, too, and they were, it was just great being around them, to see them meet and greet parents and then usher in this new group of kindergartners. And I also wanted to note that two of the three elementaries I visited today, the principals revised and updated what is a really key aspect of site management and student safety, which would be drop-off and dismissal procedures and how you manage that, and two of those buildings, the principals specifically referenced the crucial assistance of Kyle Poor, who's our district security coordinator, and so I just wanted to lift that work up and thank Kyle and the principals for their collaboration. Another thing that I wanted to note today that I think was a momentous occasion, so a little background, as we begin the school year, we're also entering final phases of budget development process for twenty-five, twenty-six. This is a highly transparent process, substantial opportunities for public input. It's a point of pride and deserves to be highlighted that LPS functions very efficiently at scale, one of the lowest-cost-per-pupil districts in the state, and, you know, along with like the state of Nebraska and UNL, we are one of the largest employers here in the capital city. Ninety percent of our expenditures are directly attributable to personnel because education is a people-first vocation, and the strategic and organizational leader for that process of budget build and development is Dr. Liz Standish, our Associate Superintendent for Business Affairs, and I wanted to take a moment to affirm Liz's leadership in this highly complex budget development and adoption process, and I wanted to further highlight Liz's leadership today because this was the first day that the newly statutorily-created School Finance Review Commission met. So Liz spent a very considerable chunk of her day in that, in that initial meeting and was over at NDE headquarters right off Eighty-Fourth for that with other members of the commission, who consist of governmental officials and school leaders from all levels across the state, all sizes of districts across the state. So grateful for Liz's service on the commission. The governor has tasked the group with the considerable challenge of critically examining and considering how we educate and pay for K-12 public education. Liz will bring astute, erudite, and insightful perspective to the commission, so we're grateful she is serving on it. Those are my updates. Thanks.
Can we give a round of applause for our custodians, for everybody? Yay, we got going!
All right, next we have announcements of upcoming events for the board. August fourteenth, there's the NASB Roundtable, eleven AM at La Vista. August fifteenth, there's the Brownlow Elementary Sixtieth Anniversary Open House from six to seven thirty PM. August twentieth, we have Face the Chamber at noon at the Lincoln Country Club. August twenty-fifth, we'll be back here for the required budget hearing at six PM, and August twenty-sixth for the board meeting here. We have another public comment. We do have a request for closed session. Do we have a motion? Peush?
I make a motion to move into closed session for negotiations and legal advice.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all right. Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevlovic.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
All right, we are recessed into closed session, and we'll adjourn after that.